Okay, good evening. Everyone, and welcome to the October tenth, two thousand and twenty-two City Council Meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. And we'll ask now for a -- no, we'll do the Pledge of Legions first. Tom, would you do it?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. And City Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Yes, Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sistarsik.
Here.
And Mayor Kalmak.
Here. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of agenda and waiver, a full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone wish to pull a consent calendar item? Okay. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor. Nine supplemental communications were received after posting the agenda. They've been distributed to the council and will be made available on the city's website for the public.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, before we move on to presentations, if we could just get a motion in a second to excuse Mayor Protem Verapapa's absence tonight?
Sure, I'll accept a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
This is actually -- this is actually on approval of the agenda. I'll have to do a separate motion for that one. Give me just one second. Okay, we can go ahead and cast your vote.
Uh, not coming up.
I think I did it for you, huh?
Did you say my name?
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember -- I'm sorry, Mayor Kalmak, how do you vote?
Yes. Thank you. That passes four zero.
Okay.
Next, we will have -- we did approve, yeah, tonight's agenda. Next, we'll have presentations and recognitions. And first is going to be recognition of Public Works Director Steve Mider's retirement. And City Manager Ingram, will you please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. If I could ask the executive management team to join me down at the podium, please?
So, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity tonight to honor our friend and colleague, Steve Mider, who has served as our Public Works Director for the last five and a half years. As all of you know, Steve unfortunately was not able to be here with us tonight as we honor and recognize his well-deserved retirement from the publics -- from the public sector. However, he and his family are watching us tonight from home. Steve recently retired from the city with nearly thirty years of public service experience as a highly respected public works professional, serving many communities in Orange County, Los Angeles County, and Marin County. I was fortunate to appoint Steve over five years ago as our Public Works Director and a key member of our executive management team. Steve was responsible for management of our Administrative Engineering Division and Utilities and Maintenance Division, including the city's capital improvement program and budget. Steve was also extremely visible in our community, especially overseeing capital projects and management of storm-related events. Undoubtedly, Steve was most passionate about water, and in his many years of experience managed water and wastewater capital programs and projects worth multimillion dollars, ensuring that these systems continue to meet increasingly stringent regulatory requirements at both the federal and state levels. One of the projects that Steve was most proud of, and some of us had the opportunity to visit with him a couple of weeks ago, and one of the projects that he talked about, he still talks about to this day, was the work that he did over a couple of years, actually, with the recent water and sewer rate study that resulted in the adoption of new rates that will help ensure the city is in the best position to be able to fund much-needed water and sewer capital projects moving forward. Prior to Steve's service to our community, he also served as Public Works Director for the city of Signal Hill, town of San Anselmo, and previously served as Director of Utilities for the cities of Newport Beach and Paramount, and manager of engineering for the city of Long Beach Water Department, following many years as a project engineer and consultant in the private sector. As all of you know, Steve has an infectious smile and sense of humor, and is one of the most optimistic, dedicated, passionate, kind, considerate, respectful, and hardest-working professionals I've ever had the honor to work with. I know our -- for our executive management team, as well as Steve's support staff, and obviously the council as well, we're incredibly honored to have worked alongside Steve for the past five and a half years, and most importantly, we're honored to call him our friend. And we continue to send our best wishes, as he now focuses full-time on his health and family. So tonight, we have a couple of items up here for Steve. As is tradition in our city, a city tile plaque for Steve Mider, Public Works Director, January two thousand and seventeen to September two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you for your dedicated service to the city of Seal Beach. It's signed Seal Beach City Council and dated today's date, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And then, all of us jointly know that Steve will especially appreciate this proclamation that's signed by all of you, the City Council, and I will read it for all of you. Steve Mider's Season of Summer shirts. Whereas upon joining the city of Seal Beach as Director of Public Works in two thousand and seventeen, Steve Mider's consistent efforts have benefited the city of Seal Beach thanks to his successful management, maintenance, and improvement of the city's public infrastructure. And whereas the focused direction of the administration and engineering and maintenance and operations divisions, these past five years helped upgrade and maintain the city's streets, utilities, parks, storm drains, sewers, beach, pier, and water. And whereas the continued beautification and beach replenishment projects have contributed to our small-town character, and whereas on behalf of the entire City Council, we extend our sincerest gratitude to Steve Mider for his service to our community over the past half-decade as our Director of Public Works. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city of Seal Beach City Council does hereby authorize the City Council and staff the ability to wear Hawaiian shirts to City Council meetings during the summer months and shall be recognized as Steve Mider's Season of Summer shirts to honor Steve's dedicated service as the Director of Public Works. In witness whereof, I hereby affix my signature and seal of the city of Seal Beach this tenth day of October in the year two thousand and twenty-two, and it's signed by Mayor Joe Kalmak, Mayor Protem Mike Verapapa, and City Council members Thomas Moore, Sandra Masalavet, and Shelley Sistarsik. And Steve, you will be incredibly missed. Thank you.
[applause]
And Council, I know each of you have some comments to make as well, so thank you.
Sandra, would you like to?
I, um, I had occasion to work with Steve, of course, and I found him responsive, charming, able to -- he knew what I was talking about. And he was able to figure it out when I really couldn't explain it as well as I should have been able to. And he, um, he helped me a great deal, and I so appreciate his time here.
Tom? Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to say I've always enjoyed working with Steve over the years. I remember when he first started in Seal Beach, we were having problems with the water pumps and flooding, and Steve stepped up, got the pumps working again, and came up with procedures to test the pumps regularly and make sure that the problems didn't happen again. So I think this alleviated a lot of concerns from residents and the council for rainstorms over the past several years. I also appreciate his demeanor as someone who would never get upset and just explain the facts of the situation, whether you agreed with it or not. He always worked hard and could tell you cared deeply and passionately about his work. And thank you, Steve, for giving me the opportunity to get to know you better, and best of luck. I know you're having some health issues, and I'll say a prayer for you to stay healthy. Thanks.
Shelley?
Okay. Same, same with Tom. I first met Steve when he came to work here, which was just about the same time that I was starting on council. So I appreciated his friendly face and someone, someone to get to know. Within a couple of weeks after he started, we started having some heavy rains. And one day in particular, it was really coming down, and my street had turned into a river, and I went over to where the pump was in that area, and it was, the water was rising and rising, and it was becoming a lake. And then I got in my car and was driving, kind of driving around, and who, who do I see but Steve Mider out there in the middle of the water, talking to the guys with the pump? And I was really impressed. He was a brand-new employee and was out there trying to take care of our area up there. So it was just, just a short while after that, I ran into Steve with his family down here on a Sunday at Eighth Street, and I said hello, and he introduced me to his family. And I thanked his wife for sharing Steve with Seal Beach, because I just felt, I felt like that's what, you know, we were, we were already kind of, you know, becoming a family. I've written something down here that I'm probably going to have to read, because I, in order to remember. "I've spoken to Steve many times over the years, but as I remember back, I think it most often involved water. Not only excess water in CPE streets, but water in general. We toured the West End Pump Station, talked about imported water, groundwater, MODOC and OCWD, water conservation, recycling of water, and where Orange County Water Department does this. About potable and non-potable water, the West Orange County Water District and its catheterization project, about PFAS chemicals and whether or not we had them in their water if they were present on the JFTB. They're, they're not. About groundwater pumping near the county line and wells to protect against saltwater intrusion, about smells at the Lamson Well, pilot projects for biological control of smells there, and when that trial did not work out, about a final solution for treatment of the smells at the Lamson Well. Also about smart meters for water and ways they can help our city. Steve never seemed to mind talking about water. Thank you, Steve, for all you've done for us, and thank you for all the explanations about projects and processes, especially about water. I have learned so much. And once again, thank you to Steve's wife and family for sharing him with our city. Thank you."
I would, of course, echo everything that other, my council colleagues have said about Steve. Just one of the most personable people that you'd ever want to talk to. He was so enthusiastic about his job, but he had this, this ability to not talk down to us, you know, when trying to explain the answer to a question that became very technical in terms of the answer. And, and the fact that he, he had expertise in so many areas and was happy to solve the problems. And so, again, echoing what my colleagues have said, you know, we're going to miss you, Steve, and we appreciate the time that you spent with us here. Thank you. Next, we have, what do we have? Yes, we're going to introduce our new full-time employees, and we'll have Lauren Barish to give us the story.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and Jill. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce two new employees. First, oh, next slide, please. First, we will begin with our police department. We recently hired Avilio Suarez as a police officer. Avilio attended the El Camino College Reserve Police Academy, graduated top of his class in two thousand and twenty, and was hired at the Huntington Park Police Department as a reserve. While working at Huntington Park PD, he was assigned to the Southeast Mental Health Team and the Bike Division. In addition, he attended the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Reserve Level One Module Academy and graduated with Level One certification and the Academic Honor Award from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Avilio is currently attending El Camino College to obtain his Criminal Justice Degree, and he's scheduled to complete all requirements in June two thousand and twenty-three, which I'm sure he's looking forward to. During his free time, he enjoys camping trips, surfing, and riding dirt bikes with the family. And Officer Suarez, did you have any brief remarks that you would like to provide?
I'd just like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to work for this great city. I started my career for the one goal to be here, for, become a police officer for this city. I'm looking forward to a long career in working with this city. Thank you so much.
Are we thinking of starting a basketball team?
[laughing] Thank you, Officer Suarez. And next slide, please. Next, I would like to introduce our new employee in the Finance Department. We hired Tracy Yanamura as our accountant back in August. Tracy was born and raised in Long Beach, where she attended Long Beach Polytechnic High School and Cal State Long Beach. Jill, I was expecting a go-beach.
Go-beach, go-beach.
She is an avid golfer who started playing when she was eight years old, and she enjoys playing recreationally with friends and family. During her time in college, Tracy co-founded the youth program at the Long Beach Japanese Cultural Center and worked as an accounting intern for Beach Hillel, a nonprofit Jewish organization. Tracy started her accounting career working for a CPA firm, where she assisted her clients with tax planning and compliance. She has worked previously for other cities as an accountant in finance. In, in her free time, she loves to care for her two pets. Tracy, do you have any brief remarks that you'd like to provide?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager.
Come up to the mic.
To the podium, sure.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager Ingram, and members of the public. I just want to express how grateful I am for the opportunity to work for the city of Seal Beach, and I look forward to serving this great community. Thank you.
[applause]
So, thank you, Tracy. We've also bonded over our love for plants, which is why we got plants in that photo. But we're excited to welcome our two newest employees of the Seal Beach family, and we wish you all the greatest success. That concludes the presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Lauren, and welcome to our new employees. Next, we're going to have a recap of our community-oriented policing staff, and we're going to have Kendra Owen and David Railbrook, who are our community.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councils, City Manager Ingram, and City Staff. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Officer Kendra Owen, and this is my partner, Officer David Railbrook. We have put together a short presentation summarizing the summer of two thousand and twenty-two as the Community-Oriented Policing Team, also known as the COP Team. In prior years, officers specifically worked the beach during the summer weekends only. With Measure BB entirely funding our position on the COP Team, it has allowed us to work all year round in various capacities. We have been able to provide more visible police presence, which aids us in keeping our residents and community safe. Next slide, please. Oh, you're already there. Okay. In October of two thousand and twenty-one, Officer Railbrook and I began working together on the Community-Oriented Policing Team. The purpose of the COP Team is to solve crime and address quality-of-life issues. By building stronger relationships with the community, the Police Department can help make our cities a safer place. By dedicating two officers outside of the normal patrol deployment, we can spend more time working with the community. We have been a great team together and have had a successful year, building bonds with our community and getting to know our businesses and residents on a better level. We continuously strive to become better partners with the community. Next slide, here on it. During this presentation, we will provide a brief recap of this summer, discuss our statistical report, highlight some notable cases, and compare the summer, this summer to last summer. Over the summer, we were busy riding our patrol bicycles, patrolling the beaches, Main Street, and other areas of Seal Beach. Working on the COP Team allowed us to be more engaged with the community and build those critical relationships. We conducted directed enforcement for specific vehicle code violations such as speeding, running stop signs, or bicycle violations. We also conducted directed enforcement of Seal Beach municipal code violations, such as drinking in public and other quality-of-life issues. Part of our duties on the COP Team is to provide outreach services to those persons experiencing homelessness. We work closely with other social organizations to provide resources to those in need. Lastly, we also met with business owners, residents, and visitors, and were able to engage with the public in a positive light and discuss crime, crime trends, and quality of life issues. Here is a overview of our statistics over the summer, which we will discuss further in some upcoming slides. From the week of Memorial Day through Labor Day, we worked every weekend to keep our city and residents safe. Our normal schedule during the summer months is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from noon to midnight. This allows maximum time in the field during the busiest hours and days of the week. Over the summer, we handled one thousand twenty-one total incidents. Of those, eighty-four percent were self-initiated, which means we observe, if we observed a violation or a quality-of-life issue, we immediately addressed it, as opposed to someone calling in dispatch and the call being assigned to us. Outside of the self-initiated activities this summer, we also responded to eight 911 calls and one hundred and thirty-three non-emergency calls for service. We made sixty-three arrests, took over ninety reports, and issued one hundred and fifty-two citations. Not all of our contacts resulted in enforcement action, though. Of those contacted, we elected to issue warnings for sixty-nine, observed violations, and provided education in lieu of taking enforcement action. And here is Officer Railbrook.
Next slide.
We had several notable cases over the summer. However, we have three to highlight here today. In July, we stopped a driver who was swerving all over the road and almost crashed into several vehicles. The driver was subsequently arrested for DUI and child endangerment, as there was three minors inside the vehicle. In August, we located two suspects fleeing in a U-Haul that had just stolen a catalytic converter. The suspects were arrested, and the converter was recovered and returned to its owner. We also arrested two subjects during a traffic stop that had just stolen over a thousand dollars' worth of merchandise from Marshalls. The subjects were also in possession of narcotics, paraphernalia, and several items pertaining to identity theft. During the summer months, we were extremely active and had a high volume of self-initiated activity, as Kendra mentioned. Eight hundred and sixty-three events out of one hundred and twenty-one total calls. These proactive events included conducting traffic stops, vehicle checks, business checks, and other various encounters. In two thousand and twenty-two, we made over sixty arrests, took over ninety reports, wrote one hundred and fifty-two citations, and one hundred and sixty-three parking citations. Our arrests and reports were very similar to the two thousand and twenty-one numbers. However, our citations and parking citations exceeded two thousand and twenty-one's numbers, and the increase in the parking citations is a direct result of our response to citizen complaints we received while patrolling Main Street and the beach lots, as well as our ability to use a digital parking sight rider while on foot patrol and on our bicycles. Here we have a bar graph that's showing the comparison of activity, activity between the summer months of two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. Overall, the comparison is very similar. Additional pedestrian and vehicle checks were conducted in order to increase police presence in various areas of the city. McGaw students went back to school in August, and even though we are typically working on the weekends, when the kids were out of school, we made time to see the kids at lunch and build relationships with the school and, and faculty. We have built great relationships with the students who love our police stickers. Working foot patrols allowed us to engage with the community and have positive interactions, like those two photos up here that show. On the left, we met with a resident who was a World War II veteran and his family, who were celebrating his ninety-ninth birthday. I think the mayor was there for that as well. And on the right, we talked with junior lifeguards when they were finished with their day. Having the ability to ride our bikes in Old Town and use the Polaris on the beach during the busy summer weekends was extremely beneficial when responding to high-traffic areas. It also allows us to work with our marine safety, marine safety partners and build relationships with other city departments. And this concludes our presentation. We'd like to thank the City Council and City Manager for their support in helping to create and implement the COP Team. We look forward to working on other safety and quality-of-life issues this fall and winter. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you both. Any questions from council? No? Great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. [applause] All right. Next is oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. Excuse me. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire City Council, not to any individual, member of the staff, or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. So I'll now open the oral communications, and anybody wishing to speak, please come to the podium.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm here about consent calendar item C, the solar array project. My name is Elizabeth Lamb, and I'm with the Los Ritos Wetlands Land Trust, and we're strong advocates for the protection and restoration of Los Ritos wetlands. Because so many of Southern California wetlands are lost forever due to infrastructure and development, those that remain deserve special attention, and projects on wetlands of any kind, even admirable projects, deserve extra scrutiny. We're very interested in the review of the solar array project. We hope you're open to the fact that perhaps it may need a fuller review than a mitigated negative declaration document. We'll wait to see about that. Some of the issues that we think are important to be studied as you review this project are the impact on migratory birds, the rare plants of Los Ritos wetlands, and the rare wildlife, specifically the least bells vireo and the belting savanna sparrow, the aesthetics of solar array panels and coastal vistas. We're completely neutral on the project right now. We're just looking forward to learning more about it and wanted to express those concerns. And I want to congratulate the city of Seal Beach for having such a wonderful natural resource within your city boundaries, and that of all of the Los Ritos wetlands that are going to be restored and rehabilitated, I'm really happy that the first areas to be restored are going to be in Seal Beach. We've already done a great job of using the wetlands to introduce children to nature and have some great outdoor classrooms opportunities out there, and we hope to do more of them. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Joe Kalmak, and council members, and City Manager Jill Ingram. Today, I get to do some fun stuff. I'm a little bit late, so I apologize for that. But in September of this year, the Seal Beach Chambers Board transferred over, and I am here to introduce our new president, Judy Baneco. We have our vice president, Karen Coons. Deborah Bell is our secretary. I have remained on as treasurer. The board then consists of Frank Carvahal, Tim Way, Patrick Gagitano, Alexis Mittel, Christine Byrd, Diana Bean, Scott Harrell, Martha Gonzalez, Manuel Govea, Greg Smith of the Naval Base, Nikki Muller. of the naval base, Nikki Muller, Barbara Barti, Rob Jenke, and Brian Warner. In addition to our new board, I have the pleasure of announcing some of the awards that came out of the chamber, celebrating some of our really fantastic businesses here in Seal Beach. Ambassador of the Year. Ambassadors are the group of people that welcome all of our new businesses. Our ambassador of the year was Scott Harrell. We have Volunteer of the Year, Diana Bean. Business of the Year, O'Malley's on Main, always a favorite here in Seal Beach. And would love to introduce our Business Person of the Year, Nikki Muller of It Takes a Village. We had two Heart of the Chamber Awards that was split up. It is the Esther Kenyon Heart of the Chamber. I know everybody knows Esther, so that weight carries on with the people that are nominated. Diana Bean being one of them, and this handsome gentleman behind me, and my husband, Darren DeLeon, as well. We have some fantastic things that are happening in the chamber. We had a really great meet-and-greet where we, and I see several candidates in the audience, where we got an intimate moment to really get to know candidates on a one-on-one, a conversational basis, hear who they are, and why it's so important to be representative of this fantastic community that we have. We will follow that up next week, October nineteenth, with a Candidates Forum. We're going to do that at the Senior Center on Wednesday. We're going to do it by district. You can stay for the whole time. However, if you're just there to see your candidate, so if you are District Five, which is Leisure World, that's going to be from 5:30 to 6:15. They're going to be in forty-five. We're going to take fifteen minutes, clean the parking lot, kind of, anybody that wants to, of course, can. District Three, following that, and then finally District One. We'd kind of switched it up this week based on some recommendations that District Five would like to go earlier, so super happy about that. We want to make sure that everybody is invited. Junie Benico, our president, is super engaging, and we are really excited for the energy we're going to have at the Seal Beach Chamber. Our networking meeting is this Thursday morning, 7:30, at O'Malley's. As we discussed a couple weeks ago, we have the multi-chamber event, fantastic networking opportunity with many chambers at Rose Hill Cemetery. If you are a cemetery, there's a very limited opportunity when you can celebrate, so they picked a fantastic month to do that. We again have the forum on the nineteenth. The McGaw Carnival is coming up on October 22nd. We are super excited to be celebrating Halloween, where the trick-or-treaters will go up and down Main Street Monday, October 31st. We have Feinberg Financial, a new business, new to us, Mara Feinberg, who came from Wells Fargo, has now opened her up her own shop. She will have an open house on October 28th and on November 3rd, giving everybody opportunity to get to know her. We encourage everybody to vote on Election Day on the eighth. And finally, coming up, and I can't believe it's coming up so quickly...
Thirty seconds to wrap up, please.
The tree lighting on November 19th. That's all I have for you. Love giving good, and thank you so much. And thank you again to our cops that make the difference in our life. And I don't know if anybody else has anything to say, but thank you so much.
Anybody else wish to address us?
Hello. I'm Lisa Lando. I'm running for District Three, City Council, and I just wanted to say thank you to the Seal Beach Police Department and Seal Beach Police Explorers and the West County Cert Team that conducted an earthquake simulation this last weekend. It was very realistic, very elaborate, and a lot of work went into it. Makeup artists, my son Cody is a police explorer. He lost his arm during the triage scenario, but don't worry, it's back. But again, just very reassured that if we do have a catastrophic event, that our police department and our West County Cert Team volunteers will be ready to take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kalmick. Councilmember Stephanie Wade, also running for District Three, City Council. And I just wanted to say I was a little dismayed at last city council meeting that the council was so quick to move, to approve abolishing our abolition of short-term rentals. I think the small-town character of our city is really in jeopardy if we start to be carved out the way a lot of coastal cities have been by short-term rentals. And if it's inevitable that we are going to have to accept some degree of short-term rentals, I hope that we're working closely with staff to provide, you know, the kind of scrutiny and regulation that'll make sure that we don't become like Party City. I mean, none of us want to live in Huntington Beach. We want to have a nice, small town, and it threatens both, you know, the folks that like to rent here and live here quietly, and it threatens the whole nature of our downtown. So I'm sure that we're already thinking about that, but I just wanted to go on record as saying that's got to be a priority for us. Thank you very much.
Seeing none, we'll close oral communications. Thank you. Next, we have our city attorney report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Prior to the meeting this evening, the council met and closed session regarding the one item on the posted agenda, gave, excuse me, direction to staff, took no reportable action, and Councilmember Vera Papa was absent and excused.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our city manager's report. City manager?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Just wanted to share with the council, I know I mentioned it at the last council meeting, but traditionally has been our past practice in this city that we close for Columbus Day. However, it's a workday for our staff, and we've been blessed and very grateful over the last fifteen years with ongoing council support to be able to dedicate this one day per year to focus on staff development and training and team building. And I can't stress it enough, I mean, it's been three years. It's hard to believe since 2019, since we were together as a team, since it wasn't safe to do it over the last couple of years. And so it was so amazing just to have everyone together today at the Marina Center. We started off our day with a special keynote speaker, Ms. Tanya Dobie, who, I can't stress this enough, she was not there as a representative of the city of Los Alamos and the Los Alamos City Council. In her career, she's a very experienced human resources professional. She has over twenty years of HR employee relations and training with extensive knowledge in employee retention and community engagement. And I will share with you, I mean, she had a room full of our full-time staff there and had all of us engaged in the message that she had to give about the why of what we do in public service. And I want to say a special thank you to Councilmember Massa Lavitt, who came and listened in on that discussion with Tanya and our group, and I know you served with her as well on Orange County Vector Control. So Sandra, thank you for coming by to hear that presentation. A lot of our day was filled, as I mentioned, with team building. You have a really competitive staff, I'll say that. We were broken up in teams, and it was just a really great day, like I said, to spend team building and focusing on, you know, again, the why of what we do and how important it is that we work together and our passion for serving the public that we do. Also want to give a shout-out to our SET team, which is our staff engagement team, who spent a lot of time over the last several weeks just planning this day for us so it could be very productive and a really fun day for us. So thank you to all of them. A good portion as well, we have, when this day originally started, we were focused primarily just on records retention, records management. We called it Free the Files Day. We all worked on paper, and that's an important part of what we do. We've really evolved since then. We still have a portion of our day that's dedicated to the city clerk's office and working on our records retention and records management programs to ensure that we're clearing our files and doing so properly. And we did end our day with a presentation by Lieutenant Nick Nicholas, a very important presentation on active shooter training for our staff team. And again, I can't stress this enough, I just want to say thank you again to the council for your continued support of not only your staff team, but allowing us to take this day to spend together. So thank you. That concludes my report tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Now we have council comments. We'll start with Shelley.
Thank you, Mayor. In the last two weeks, I attended a regional military affairs committee meeting. I attended an OCTA elected officials workshop. Under discussion was the long-range transportation plan that they're working on, getting some input from council people and public works people from around the county. I attended the Candidates Forum at Waltz Wharf, and thank you for the chamber putting that on. I attended the opening ceremony for the Pacific Air Show and installation of some new service members to the Air Force and National Guard. I completed my ethics training that is required every two years for many of us, and I attended a Founder's Day pickleball tournament at the Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center. It was, I guess, a round-robin event, and everyone seemed to be having a good time. And I'd like to thank Mark Lopezco, Elizabeth Kane, for organizing the events, and those volunteers who are helping with the scorekeeping and such there. And that's all my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra?
I know that you're all getting sick of me talking about mosquitoes, but it's getting really bad. There have been forty-five dead birds that have tested positive for West Nile virus. One of them is close as Los Alamos. So it's only a hop, skip, and a jump and a wind to get those same mosquitoes over here, and just because they're flying around and not tested doesn't mean they're not carrying West Nile virus. It's October. It probably shouldn't be as bad as it is, but let me tell you, it is bad. So please pay attention to your standing water, well, those of us that water, anyway, and be careful about mosquitoes coming into your house. Make sure that all your screens and windows are secure. And, you know, this is a deadly disease, and we don't want to have anyone ill with it in our city or around our city or anywhere. But there are people getting very sick, and one has already passed away. So pay attention to the mosquitoes. I know the little eighties guys that, they call them ankle biters. So far, they don't carry eighties, but they carry other things that are curable, and you just have to know you have typhus. But, you know, just be careful of these little things. They're a pain, not only in itching, but pain in another way, too. So be careful. And you all know about the construction of the sand district, the Orange County Sanitation District is doing work in the street all along Seal Beach and Los Alamos and then down Cotella. So there's periodic road closures, and it's really another inconvenience. And when you're not scratching your mosquito bites, you have to change lanes because the one you're in is closed. So, you know, be aware that they're out there and take care. And that's what I have.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, just real quick, want to thank the police. They caught, or one of our residents reported someone breaking into a bunch of cars in our neighborhood, and they reported it, and the police came right away and handled it. So thank you.
Good. Okay. I attended our monthly Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG, meeting this month, and we had a very large discussion about water. And this is an area that SCAG is now moving into because we have serious water issues that go beyond, you know, whether we're in a drought. You know, we're talking about the fact that, as an example, the snowpack is possibly forever diminished. And so it's a question then of groundwater, and it's a question of capturing rainwater and runoff so that we still have an adequate water supply. So this is a pretty big deal because SCAG has its, you know, its area of influence, you know, throughout the entire Southern California region. And so, you know, those of us on the board were pleased to see that this is the direction that we are going. I also attended the Candidates Forum, and thanks to the chamber for putting it on, I was there. I'm going to be attending on Wednesday. I accepted an invitation from the governor's office. They're going to be having a roundtable discussion with regard to infrastructure money that potentially could be out there in the many, many millions of dollars. And so whenever I hear infrastructure money, I want to be there because maybe there's something in there for us, whether it's San Gabriel River infrastructure or anything else that our city could be able to take advantage of. So I'm looking forward to being able to report on what we learned there. This is a committee that brings a name from the past, that Anthony Villarosa, the former mayor of LA, has been tasked with, is heading this up. So we'll see what we can learn there. And that concludes my report. So next, we don't have council items tonight. The consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. So I'll call for a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of any items pulled, and there were none pulled. So could we, yes?
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Good, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Councilmember Mas, oh, you want me to call? Sorry. You said, "Please vote," so I thought you were doing your own. Sorry about that. Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sostarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavitt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes. Thank you. That passed four to zero. Four to zero. Okay, moving right along. Next is a public hearing regarding Zone Text Amendment 22-2, which amends portion of Title 11 of the Seal Beach Municipal Code pertaining to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, which brings our city in line with state law. So I'll call upon our Community Development Director, Alexis Mittel, to take care of this item for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to the mayor and city council, city manager Ingram. We're here tonight to discuss a revision to our municipal, our zoning ordinance, municipal code for accessory dwelling units, which I'll refer to as ADUs for this conversation. In recent years, many, many bills have been signed into law in attempt to address the state housing crisis. These laws include a variety of legislation related to accessory dwelling units or ADUs. As a result, the city adopted Ordinance 1690 in August of 2021 to amend the zoning code to address the new ADU laws. And like all things that are new, we found some room for improvement, and so did the State Department of Housing and Community Development. We sent them our ordinance after its adoption, which is required by law, and they provided us feedback in April of this year. Part of the changes that you see in front of you tonight are based on HCD's findings, and then there are other pieces that are recommended by and then there are other pieces that are recommended by staff, and I'm going to walk through those. But I'm skipping this. We'll go to these itemized statements. So, ADUs are allowed in multifamily circumstances, and there were sections of our ordinance that HCD felt that we should include additional references to multifamily uses. It was allowed under our ordinance, but there were portions of the ordinance that existed that could have been clarified. So, we did that by adding in those references. They required that we clarify that an attached garage is part of a housing unit and therefore can be converted into a junior ADU. We made that change. ADUs must allow, must be allowed to be up to 16 feet in height. Some language was changed to ensure that that is read correctly within our ordinance. Our original ordinance was drafted in a way that suggested a minor use permit might be required in certain circumstances. ADUs must be approved administratively per state law, and so that reference was removed. We have to allow for junior ADUs to be as small as 150 square feet. And I would just say that do keep in mind that while a junior accessory dwelling unit does need to have its own basic cooking facilities, it can share a bathroom with the main house. Speaking of basic cooking facilities, in a JADU, they can be countertop appliances. So, we revised our ordinance to reference the government code as opposed to delving into a whole lot of detail about countertop appliances. And finally, under very specific rules, the state law says that an ADU can be sold independently of the main house. To meet that standard, the unit needs to be owned by a qualified nonprofit who sells to a low-income family using a special no-interest loan program. So, it is, it is possible, but it's pretty unlikely. It's a, it's a very limited exception, however, that is state law, so our code was revised to reflect that. And then there were other pieces that our staff recommended. The, as I mentioned, you know, this was our first cut at it, and having had the opportunity to process a couple of ADUs over, over the last year since the ordinance was adopted, we found that there were things in there that would help us understand the intent of the legislation as well as the public. So, we've included an expanded list of terms, definitions. There were some variety between what's, what's a duplex versus multifamily. So, little nuances like that we've clarified within the code to make it simpler to understand for everyone. We also took a couple extra steps to meet state law, and that included adding that JADUs are allowed in single-family units only and clarifying how ADU law interacts with Senate Bill 9, which is law, of course, now. And that's the bill that allows a lot split, so a single lot to be split into two. So, we wanted to make sure that we were clear about what happens if you had a lot split and whether or not an ADU was allowed. We made some additional clarifications that were the intent of our original ordinance as staff is reading it, but were not stated as explicitly as they could have been. For example, anyone wishing to go above 1,000 square feet for an ADU has the opportunity to go up to 1,200 square feet, but they must provide an additional parking space. We clarified that recreational vehicles cannot be used as an ADU, that an ADU may be built over an accessory structure, and that an exterior stairway may provide access to an ADU above a detached structure like a garage to avoid losing a parking space if you were constructing that stairway within the garage. Unfortunately, I'll, I'll be back here with a brand-new ADU ordinance in, in the coming months. The, the law continues to evolve, and two weeks ago, the government, the governor signed yet another bill that impacts this legislation. So, we will be taking a look at that and going forward with any clarifications or changes that we need to make to this ordinance. However, it was my preference to bring this to you now, since this was actually several months of work, and there are a lot of changes that I think are really important to our code to meet the state standards that HCD has given to us, and then also, again, to just make it easier and simpler for staff and the public to understand the ordinance and what's allowed. So, I didn't want to slow this process just to address the new legislation. We're going to have to take this as, as an iterative step. So, we've made a lot of improvements with what's in front of you before that staff is recommending you adopt, and then, as I said, we will be back to make sure that our, our ordinance is in compliance with the new state laws that will go into effect January 1st. And with that, I'm available for questions, as is our interim senior planner, Art Boshmackian, who was instrumental in, in helping me with this.
Any questions?
I just had one. It was clarification. So, if you have a lot split under SB 9, you can have two duplexes, but you don't get to have an ADU, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. Two units per lot.
So, four maximum units on it.
That's right. So, if you, if you, if you split the lot and you did a single-family home on each, then they could have an ADU, but you're still maxed at four anyway you look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom?
No, no, nothing.
You don't want to know what I think.
Thank you. Yeah, I feel kind of the same way. I mean, it's difficult enough that, that we have these new unfunded state mandates, and I just hope that the word can get around to all of our residents, not just those of you that have taken the trouble to come here and hopefully are watching on television, exactly where these new laws are coming from and the fact that these are not suggestions. They're not asking us to please do these things. These are now state laws. And until such time as different administrations or not that any of these laws would be rolled back, this is what we have to comply with now. So, thank you for the presentation. Now, I'll open the public hearing, and if there's anybody that wishes to speak on this subject.
Mayor, council members, Alexa, thank you for your presentation. I just had a question, so I'm not clear on something.
Could you, pardon me, could you?
Certainly, certainly. I'm not, I'm not clear on something, so I just want to understand something. So, if you have a single-story home and it's attached to a garage, can you only put a JADU on top, or can you put an ADU on top with an external staircase so you don't lose a parking spot?
Oh, please.
Yeah, thank you.
The ordinance right now, if you were a single-family home with an attached garage, you are not able to put a second-story ADU. You can create an ADU within the home, or you could add on to the one-story home, but you are limited in height to either the height of the existing house or 16 feet, whichever is greater.
So, then it would be considered an expansion of the home to 16 feet above the garage, but not considered an ADU? That's how you have to apply for it. I'm expanding my home, but I can't put, it's not called an ADU, under the ADU rules. And I'm not trying to be so specific. I've just been confused because I presented to, to Marco several times, some of, so detached garages, I completely understand that that's allowed, yes. So, but the attached, it's not an ADU, it has to be an expansion. Is that the same in Huntington Beach and in Long Beach, or is that just statewide?
There's some variety between cities, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So, I know in Long Beach and Huntington, it varies, and you're allowed to do that in a lot of cases. So, we've chosen not to follow that directive yet, I hope.
The ordinance right and as proposed does not include that.
Great. Thank you very much for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council and City Manager and Staff. I'm Susan Perrell. I live in Bridgeport, been in Seal Beach, I don't know, maybe 30 years now, something like that. First of all, I just want to say thank you to staff. Excellent job trying to grapple and understand the changes that are, everyone's trying to understand and grapple with, and, and you really stayed on top of it and getting your hands around it. So, thanks to the planners for doing that. I guess my point is here, we, we must, of course, comply with state mandates, including SB 9 and SB 10 and other onerous state removal of cities' rights to do their own zoning. We have, we have to comply. But these, these changes, I don't, a lot of people don't like them, and they really threaten to end single-family housing in California. And I think, I just want to encourage us to continue to do what we have to do to avoid getting in trouble with the state, but maybe let's be clever about this and not assume that these very unpopular changes will stick because movements are afoot to counter with the 2024 ballot initiative. There are a lot of groups, Our Neighborhood Voices is one of the groups, and there's others working to make sense out of this craziness. I just, I just think we should try our best legally to keep options open to reverse things if, if there are changes to these laws. Because right now, we're just enriching the building industry. I don't know that we're going to make housing more affordable by any of these initiatives, and we're certainly going to make our communities unsustainable from an environmental perspective. I, I think these initiatives are incompatible with the purpose of California's Environmental Quality Act. They threaten impacts to traffic and air quality and water quality, energy reliability, water availability, and most important, maybe, our, in Seal Beach, our cultural and historic preservation is really threatened. So, let's just be smart about this, and maybe it'll be overturned. Let's, let's not make sure we don't do anything that we can't reverse. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And any additional council questions? Tom?
I have one question. What are the consequences if we don't abide by the state guidelines?
Get a whipping. I'm kidding.
City Attorney, do you have a good answer to that? Because I think mine would be, you know, we'd move toward litigation, I imagine, if they wanted to go that far.
Yeah, I don't think I have a good answer, but I, I have an answer. The, the same types of sanctions that, that apply if we don't have a, for example, a housing element that complies with state law kind of apply here. HCD can report us to the Attorney General for not having a compliant ADU ordinance or having an ordinance that doesn't comply with law. The housing advocacy groups can sue us to have our ordinance changed to comply with state law as well. So, you know, we don't have a lot of options to sort of ignore it, ignore these laws because built into them are sanctions where the Attorney General's office or a private housing group can force us to change the law. And, you know, the unfortunate thing when you are forced to change the law through litigation is that somebody else is telling you what your ordinance has to say. Here, we're trying to be as, you know, as, as open as possible to, to leave the city options. You don't really get options or leeway when a court orders you to make legislative changes.
Are there any other cities that aren't following this?
I don't know of any that aren't following the ADU requirements. There are some, you know, rumblings about lawsuits related to the SCAG. Well, there are lawsuits related to housing element law. I'm not aware of any cities that aren't complying with the ADU, excuse me, ordinances. All right, thanks.
Sandra? Talk about mosquitoes again instead?
No.
Shelley?
No, that's all for me.
Okay. No, I think you've eloquently given us the, the bad news of the day, and hopefully, you know, that, as Susan mentioned, that, you know, there are ground swells of movement by the public to create, you know, a push against the pendulum to bring it back, you know, towards center. But, you know, it looks like in the meantime, we have to, we have to be in compliance. And that's before we start talking about vacation rentals. Okay. Next, we'll move on to new business, item H.
Mayor, we need a motion and a vote on that ordinance.
Sorry. May I have a motion?
Here, I'll, I'll move to approve.
Is the public hearing closed?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Okay. I'll second it.
Thank you. Please vote.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalmak, how do you vote?
Yes.
That's Ordinance 1699, Ordinance of the City of Seal Beach, amending section 11.0, sorry, 11.4.05.115 of Chapter 11.4.05 of Part 4 of Title 11 of the Seal Beach Municipal Code pertaining to accessory dwelling units and finding the ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. Now, of the court, please, we'll move on to new business, item H, which is to accept and assign coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act for Government Services, Public Safety, and approved budget amendment allocating other general fund revenues to the Tennis and Pickleball Center CIP project, BG 2105, and that the City Council adopt Resolution 7339, which involves accepting these funds. So, we'll have a report from our finance director on this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members, Madam City Manager, and members of the public. This presentation is for the acceptance and assignment of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. The city received approximately $5.7 million, and this report is for administration and auditing purposes. An overview of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. In March 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law, which established the SLRF. In May 2021, Treasury published the interim final rule, which most cities base their allocations on. There were several updates to the interim final rule, and in January 2022, Treasury adopted the final rule. An important fact about this slide is that Treasury continues to release guidance as recently as last month. The slide before you is guidance directly from the U.S. Department of Treasury, and in the final rule, recovery funds must be invested in four broad categories. One, public sector revenues, which includes the updated $10 million standard allowance for the provision of revenue loss for government services. Two, public health and economic response. Three, premium pay for essential workers. And four, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Again, the box on the left is guidance directly from the U.S. Department of Treasury, and on the right is a summary. To summarize, city staff recommends taking the standard allowance, which is the most flexible eligible use category. It simplifies ongoing reporting requirements, which can be costly and burdensome, simplifies the administrative tracking and reporting, and which means the city can spend the full amount on government services up to the revenue loss amount the city received. The City Council can choose not to take the provision. This would cause ongoing reporting requirements that would be costly and would be a burden upon staff. And additionally, capital improvement projects must also be completed within requirements outlined by the Treasury. And CIPs require written justification and approval, and the city must show why a CIP is superior to another. Reporting and approvals can impact timing, causing issues with meeting Treasury requirements. Staff recommends taking the final rule provision for the full amount of government services for public safety, which takes the most restricted funds, utilizing the full amount for public safety due to the updated final rule provisions. This in turn frees up unrestricted general funds, which can be utilized for the Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center and the remaining 3.1 million, which can be utilized at City Council discretion and will be brought back in the latter part of fall 2022. Again, this is, this report is for administrative and auditing purposes to close out the fiscal year. Staff... Staff recommends accepting the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds of 5.7 million and allocating the funds to the Fiscal Year 2122 General Fund for the provision of government services for public safety as outlined by the Treasury final rule. Additionally, approve the Fiscal Year 2122 budget amendment allocating the tennis center to the general fund, and approving the freed-up 3.1 million to the general fund assigned balance to be brought back in the latter part of fall 2022. This is the end of my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions? Sandra?
Gosh, we might get some money out of this.
We are.
Yeah.
Tom?
You know, when you said the fall, what, what's the timeline for that? Is that the next few months?
Yes, I'm, we're thinking the end of December 2022.
Okay, and we discussed at the strategic planning meeting for the past few years, using that money for kind of direct benefit of residents for parks, and I was also think, you know, when we had the pension liability for the Seal Beach fire, we were, had the potential to save the city a big chunk of money for the long term. So I just, when staff looks at these things, I'd like you to consider looking at those when you present something to council.
Thank you.
My, my question was just, since we, we designated the money last year for the tennis center, but we haven't actually used it yet, is that how we're, I mean, is it, it's just a matter of bookkeeping, or what?
Yes, it's for auditing purposes. We're moving, utilizing those restricted funds and moving them over to the general fund, and that's action item number two.
And that gives us more flexibility when it comes to completion on time and that sort of thing?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm okay. Okay, seeing no more comments, I'll call for a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. Could we please vote?
Councilmember Masalabat, how do you vote? Councilmember?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sishtarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalmek, how do you vote?
That passes, thank you. Next, item I, which is to approve amendments of the classification pay grade of multiple marine safety part-time classifications. And this would mean adopting Resolution 7340, which would increase the pay for part-time marine safety employees by 5% in the following classifications: pool lifeguard, swim instructor, assistant pool manager, pool manager, aquatics coordinator, beach lifeguard, junior lifeguard coordinator, beach operations supervisor, rescue boat operator, and two, approving the 2022 City of Seal Beach pay structure for part-time employees effective October 16th of 2022, and repealing all resolutions regarding hourly wages for part-time seasonal temporary employees in conflict with the resolution, and four, authorizing the city manager or their designee to implement changes to the salary schedule and take all of their actions consistent with this resolution. And now we'll call on our marine safety chief, Joe Bailey, to give us a presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I appreciate you reading all those titles, so now I'm not going to. The item before you tonight is an increase in compensation for all marine safety part-time employees, so that's the beach and the pool. The increase we're asking for is 5%, and in the, in the classifications you read, there, there's a whole bunch of them. Not all of those are necessarily filled, but they're in the job classification for the city on the part-time chart. A little bit of history, over the last couple of years, it's become increasingly difficult to recruit candidates for the beach and the pool positions. After our poor turnout this year, where we had eight people show up to our beach tryout, we ended up hiring three. So actually, we did get three good lifeguards out of eight, but usually the odds are you'd get less good lifeguards out of it. But anyway, with, with that bad turnout, you know, the, the first thing we did is we looked inward to see what are we doing wrong? And we have, now have a 10-point plan to, to do better next year, and one of the big points of that plan is increasing the pay, because as an example, five years ago, our beach lifeguards were paid five cents better than the Long Beach beach lifeguards as rookies, the first-year lifeguards. So our pay hasn't changed since then in five years, and so now Long Beach has paid $5 more an hour for their rookie lifeguard. So things have changed in Long Beach, and they haven't moved for us, and we're falling behind, and it's making it increasingly difficult to recruit lifeguards for the beach. People think, oh, well, you, you must compete with a lot of the beaches in Orange County, and really, our one competitor is Long Beach, just the kids in the Long Beach, La Salle, Amos area that we're really vying for. So like the beach, the pool, we, it's a year-round operation, so it's seven days a week. We take a couple days off. I think Christmas and Thanksgiving, we don't open the pool, but most other days during the year, it's open for aquatic classes or adult lap swim. And I shouldn't say adult lap swim, it's just lap swim now, we let kids in now. So, so what that means is that we can't have high school kids working year-round because they're in school while we have the pool open for lap swim, so we need, i- it's, it's a difficult thing to get lifeguards for year-round. It's not so hard to get the summer time staffing for the pool, but the year-round staffing is difficult. And so this increase will help attract and keep quality employees for the safety of Seal Beach citizens at the beach and the pool, and the 5% raise will cost the city $33,000, just about $34,000 this year. The money is available in the budget, and, and that's because we're, we increased the fees not only at the pool, but we increased some junior lifeguard fees at the beach to cover the pay increase. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
I don't have any. It's about time.
It's, it's about time.
Yeah, five years is long enough. Okay, if we have no more questions, then I'll call for a motion second for this item.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Councilmember Sishtarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalabat, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalmek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes. So now it's time for adjournment, but tonight's meeting will be adjourned in the memory of CERT volunteer Fritz Campbell, who passed away on September 9th. He was 85 years old, and I'll call on Captain Mike Ezrow to give us a story here.
Thank you, sir. Fritz joined West County CERT in 2008, and he served as the safety officer and training lead for the program. Whether he was developing training programs, writing after-action reports, or ensuring team safety during CERT events, Fritz was always busy contributing his time to enhance the West County CERT program. Fritz led by example and embodied the spirit and definition of volunteerism. Fritz spent his working career with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, ATF, from 1971 to 1994, where he retired as a senior special agent. He passed away on the September 9th. He was 85, and he will be missed. There will be memorial services for Fritz held Thursday, October 13th at 2:00 p.m. at the Riverside National Cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. So on behalf of the City Council and the City of Seal Beach, I send our condolences to Mr. Campbell's family, the Seal Beach Police Department, and members of the community who had the pleasure of knowing him. Any council comments from anybody that did know him?
Didn't know him.
Okay, so now I'll adjourn the council in memory of CERT volunteer Fritz Campbell to Monday, October 24th, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. to meet and close session if deemed necessary. Thank you for all of you attending, and have a good evening.